Good evening. My name is Brian Haggerty. I'm the Chair of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. And I'd like to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting. Anyone following along on the Internet, you can go to youtube.com/user/goepcc. Bell, call the order, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Uxser.
Here.
Mrs. Roblis.
Here.
Ms. Nahira is not here. Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mrs. Moy.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Haggerty.
Here. Well, see it for the President's reasons, please. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting. Bell, can we start off with?
1.4, Approval of Minutes. There is none. Item 1.5, Welcome to Guests and Staff Members. Item 1.6, Open Forum. We do have one judge. Roberto Garza will address the Board regarding the Purple Heart Chapter Appreciation of EPCC.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Commander Roberto Garza of the Military Order of Purple Heart, Lone Star Chapter 393. It's truly a privilege to be here today. I want to express my deepest gratitude to El Paso Community College and specifically the Trans Mountain Campus, Carl Dwyer, the Veterans Resource Center, and the Student Veterans of America Chapter. Your generosity in allowing us to use the Trans Mountain Campus auditorium for our National Purple Heart Day Ceremony is deeply appreciated. That event was about honoring our Purple Heart recipients, those brave men and women who have made immense sacrifices for our freedom. Providing this space allowed us to give them the recognition they so rightfully deserve. It's a testament to EPCC's commitment to our veteran community and a powerful demonstration of your support. Your support goes beyond just the physical space. It shows a genuine partnership. This ceremony is a vital tradition, and your collaboration made it possible for us to come together and reflect on the true meaning of service and sacrifice. So from all of us, thank you for your commitment to honoring our heroes. Thank you for your commitment to El Paso and the Veterans Capital of the USA. Your actions speak volumes and truly make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Mr. Rene Di Peña, CPA, Principal, Shareholder of Peña, Briones, McDaniel, and Co., will present audit results regarding the Student Success Endowment Scholarship.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present this. We're with Peña, Briones, McDaniel, as you said, and we were charged to do what's called an agreed-upon procedure. The Board, a couple of years ago, ordered that a student endowment success fund be created, and then we were ordered to look at the attributes that were challenged to the management and see if they were done. And so what I have in front of you, and don't worry, I'm not going to go through every word on every page, but I'd like to just give a quick synopsis of each of the directives. The Board said to do this, did they do it? The Board just said to do that, did they do that? So I'll quickly run through some of these, but I will pay attention to one specific item of specific interest. So first of all, the Student Success Endowment Fund. On April 2023, the Board directed the college to create a Student Success Endowment Fund. The fund was created. On May 28, '25, the Board of Trustees received an amendment to that establishment, and the amendment is required that the 90% of the original interests that was originally stated shall be used for scholarship to say, shall be allocated to scholarships. So basically, instead of ordering, every year you have to do this, every year we're going to allocate the interest to it. And then, secondly, the amendment modified the original language to be directed at the discretion of the Executive Committee instead of bringing it to the full Board. So relieving the full Board of that requirement. And both of those were done as required. So moving on to the next one, the establishment of the endowment. The objective was to determine if the college did establish an endowment, and the final observation was, yes, the Student Success Endowment Fund was created on August 30th of 2023. And that date does become important a little bit later. The next one were deposits of funds. We're giving you $30 million. The objective was to verify that $30 million was deposited into the Student Success Endowment Fund. And what we did, I determined or identified, is that the initial deposit into the endowment fund was made on August 28th of 2024 for $33,037,317. The original $30 million plus accrued interest from the date that the funds were received of $3,037,317. So the entire amount from the date of inception to the date that the fund was established was transferred into the endowment fund. The next one was the investment of the funds. The objective was to verify that they were invested based on the directive of the Board of Directors. And on the observation on the next page was that on August 28th, the funds were transferred to local government pool, this was back on 28th of '24, to the tax pool, and the remainder of the account as of August 24 was there. Before the transfer, the funds were held in the tax pool account with the college funds, so they were commingled, but they were tracked separately. So even though the funds weren't transferred into the fund originally, they were tracked separately. So yes, the investment funds are followed with the Board directives. Was an executive committee established and as required by the trustees? And the answer is yes. On February 29, 2024, the Board of Trustees appointed the executive committee of the Student Success Endowment Fund. Keeping on going, a scholarship selection committee. And on top of the executive committee, the President was directive to appoint a committee that directly reports to the executive committee. And again, on the next page, the observation that during the first executive committee meeting on 2024, the scholarship select committee was established. On April 29, 2024, the team developed the eligibility scholarship criteria. The scholarship committee then first met with the executive committee on May of 2024 to discuss the eligibility. And the scholarship selection committee was present with the executive committees on the upcoming meetings. So the answer is yes, that objective was achieved. Then, a presentation by the executive committee to the Board of Directors. Again, to determine at the first meeting of the Board of Directors that the, and at the annual meetings, a report would be presented. Basically, pardon what I'm doing now. The executive committee first did present to the Board of Trustees on September 24 of 20, September 24th of 2024. So the presentation was made. Again, objective completed. Presentation by the executive committee to the Boards, to the college president to determine that the executive committee was providing a report to the President and the Board of Trustees at least annually. And again, the observation was that the first presentation by the executive committee to the Board of Trustees was done on September of 2024. Objective achieved. Then the corpus fund. The objective was to verify that the corpus fund was not spent. The objective to verify the corpus funds were not spent during the fiscal year of 2024. The observation was that, and this is the corpus, the observation is that the $30 million of the corpus initial donation was made on 2021. The board resolution stated that the Student Success Fund should transfer the funds, and they were transferred on August of 2024 for the $33,037 that I mentioned earlier. The fund included interest earned, and they were tracked separately in the accounting records since the donation was received. The $33 million includes interest earned since the date the donation was made. As of August 2024, the tax pool account had the full $33,056. So yes, the $33 million corpus was retained, and the extra $3 million is also in there. Then the next one, this is where, if I can spend a little bit of time, because we'll need a, I think there'll be a presentation for a suggestion from the Board. An allocation of scholarship and determination of the funds available. The objective was to verify that 90% of the interest accrued during the fiscal year ending August 24 from the Student Success Endowment Fund was allocated to the scholarships to students of the El Paso Community College. The issue is that this is saying that 90% of the interest earned from the Student Success Endowment Fund. Well, the Success Endowment Fund was created a few, couple of years after the initial deposit. So if you jump down to the observation, the first scholarship awarded from the Student Success Fund is done in the subsequent year, October of 2024. So no scholarships were awarded during this fiscal year. But if you'll jump down, the resolution states that 90% of any interest accrued every fiscal year from the Student Success Endowment Fund should be allocated to the scholarship. Of the $3,184, that's the interest earned from the date the funds were received and to the date that the deposit was made, of the $3,100, $1,709 actually represents interest earned from the date of inception to the date that the fund was actually created. The remaining $1,475 represents interest earned prior to the date of the creation of the Student Success Fund. So what we're doing is splitting hairs here, that the funds were deposited, it earned $3 million, but, well, not but, 1.4 million of that $3 million was earned prior to the establishment of the fund. And because the resolution says earnings from the fund should be allocated to the scholarship, a question arises, what happens to the $1,400 that was earned prior to the establishment of fund? Picking words here and splitting hairs. So I think to make everything so that the Board or management knows what to do with those 1.4, the question arises, should this pre-establishment of fund earnings be put into the corpus of the $3 million? Or can it, and I believe that's probably what the Board wanted, or can it go into the scholarship available interest for scholarships? And that's going to be a question that'll be brought up to you a little bit later. So hopefully I explained that well. Okay? And then the very same thing on the allocation of the emergency fund, that 9%, to verify that 9% of the interest for the, from the student scholarship fund is put aside for emergencies. No emergency funds were distributed at that time. And again, we need to know what to do with the 1,409% of that. And then finally, on the last one, the allocation of reinvestment to the corpus, and that was to verify that 1% of the interest accrued would be kept and added to the corpus. And again, the observation is that, yes, the first presentation of the Board was made on September 24, and the funds were deposited. Then the corpus funds, to verify the corpus funds were not spent during the year, no, the $30 million is intact, including the 1%. And then allocation and determination of funds available, finally, to verify that 90% of the interest accrued during the year ended August 24 from the student endowment fund was allocated to the scholarship, to scholarships for the programs. And again, down at the end, we're stating that the first scholarships awarded were in the subsequent year, which is October of 2024. And again, the 90% and the 9% and the 1% are in the fund. The resolution needs to determine clearly what happens, what we should be doing with the funds that were originally earned. And finally, approval of contracts to verify that the executive committee had prior approval from the Board of Trustees for contracts, and the observation is that the executive committee did not enter into any contracts as of August 31, 2024. So hopefully I didn't read through that too fast, but I didn't want to take too much of your time. So bottom line is, all the objectives were met. The only question is clarification on the interest earned prior to the establishment of the scholarship fund. And that's my story. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have one. So we're talking about 3.1 mil in interest allocated, 1.4 prior to establishing the legal authority, and 1.7 now controlled. And so I'm trying to get a concept for, a couple of questions. First of all, Dr. Serato, are you, the 1.7 million, okay, is allocated to scholarships in that particular fiscal year. Were all of those funds allocated?
No, sir.
Okay, so there was, okay, so that leads a question. When they say they shall be allocated, what happened, what did we do? What does that, does it go back into the?
We will maintain it in a scholarship fund for students.
So we maintained a scholarship fund independently, it doesn't go back to the original?
It doesn't go back into the corpus.
Okay. So if we, now, then my suggestion is that if we did not use all that money for the scholarship, and we have 1.4 million that we need to melt, we need to handle, it's a one-time thing, and we're going to be, and my position is, okay, that a 1% return of interest back to the basic deal is probably insufficient compared to a 2 to 5, 2 to 3, 2 to 4, whatever your particular deal is, is that this is a one-time shot. We have the, we have the procedure, we have the policy to move it forward from here on after, that we'll allocate the funds of that particular year to scholarships, and we didn't allocate all the funds to the scholarships, so there's money left over. So if we do the, keep the 1.4, we're going to have a lot more left over. So let's, let's tuck the 1.4 back into the original and, and just have the scholarship fund benefit from that one, a one-time advantage.
I, I think that's a Board decision, Mr. Uxser. I certainly understand and respect the proposition. A couple of things. So we received the resources in 2021, and it began to earn interest thanks to our staff who put it away wisely. It began to earn interest. The Board then contemplated how to utilize these resources with legal counsel's assistance. We were able to come up to resolution of how to utilize the, the resources in 2024. So the initial amount of interest was much larger than we would have anticipated providing in any given year of scholarships. So I'm, by no means am I opposed, and it's really a Board decision, on what to do with the 1.475. That is additional revenue that was collected before that period of time where the Board established the Student Success Endowment. So I would caution the Board not to say that we will use all of the resources, because there may be years where we're not able to award enough scholarships, or the students don't meet the requirements that have been established based on the, on the scholarships, and that we could keep those resources, because remember, it's a fall and spring, as well as the following fall and spring, that the Board has committed to for those students. So you're, everything that you said is logical, and that would be a Board decision?
Respectfully, I disagree with that, sir. I think that that should be an administrative decision, because as a Board member, I don't want to have that control that, you know, that we tie the hands of the people that are actually seeing the need upfront of the students. So I would just, I think that we already articulated the, the plan clearly, ran it by legal several times, and discussed it and agreed upon it, and that is a piece that needs to be discussed by the administrative team or the executive team and, and made a decision on that.
Well, if, if I may, again, the question is, because it stated that the interest earned from the fund, the, so the 1.4 million, the question is whether that should be put into the corpus, and we should have $31.4 million that we never spent? Or can we, can we say that the original $30 million is the corpus, and every penny earned since that point goes into the scholarship fund for scholarships?
I have a question. I think it's the 30 million, but don't we then take each one year, the scholarship fund increases by 1%?
Correct.
So in other words, so it's not 30 million, this, it's 30.1 fund of that, and all I'm saying is, is that it's a one-time deal? We haven't used it there, the policy is, yeah. And, and so we have a question. Do we want to say, we want to have a bigger petty cash? I mean, I know that 3 million, 2 million, but, but have, we use, for lack of a better term, have a petty cash there, okay? Or if we put it back in the scholarship fund, and that in itself becomes a basis for more interest to be earned in the future?
Right. And again, since it was all established by the Board, this is a clarification that we're asking the Board.
And Dr. Serato, Chair Haggerty, if you want to, we could jump into section 1.9.7, if the Board wants to have that discussion now.
My, my personal opinion is the one, the money that was made before we set up the fund is put it back in the funding, give it out in scholarships. Because I, I think what the Board's idea was, we'd always have 30 million as our.
As the corpus.
As our corpus, so that, so if we made interest before we got around, because we had a big discussion on how we were going to do with this money.
For several days.
And we finally decided, so just put that other money that was earned prior to, put it in the funding, give it out in scholarships.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I think the original intent was, 30 million's going to be the corpus. Anything it earns goes into the scholarship, but we need the clarification.
Well, scholarships plus the 1%.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, yes.
So we, the administration has broken down the data for the Board, and the 1 point, it's $1,475,260. If we went with the original intent of the Board, then an additional $1,327,734 would go into the scholarship fund, which we would allocate as, as quickly as we can, as long as students meet the requirements, et cetera. $132,773 additional dollars would go into the emergency fund, and then an additional $14,753 would go back into the fund to try and maintain its, its buying power, so to speak. But again, this is a Board decision. I, I want to make sure that, that the Board's direction doesn't violate what we've actually established. And I'd ask legal counsel to weigh in.
I have a question out over there. If we had one, we earned 1.7 million, okay, that was available to be awarded to scholarships, and we didn't award it, what's to say that we're going to be needing above and beyond that? We're going to plan for future catastrophe? It seems to me that the bigger the pad we have, the insurance, it gives us there. I realize the idea that we want to do it, but we didn't give it all out before. We didn't give it out now. So why do we think we want to save it so we can give it out some other time?
I think that's fair. I, my, my only caution is that it not violate what the Board actually established.
I think the question here is, is do we want to keep it at 30 million, or do we want to add that to it and make it 31, like you said? That's our only decision. My decision is, our number one issue was to make sure we always had the 30 million. So I say, we do what Dr. Serato is saying, is we put the 1.4 back into the scholarship fund. And if we don't give it out, then it rolls over to the next year. As long as we keep the balance of 30 million bucks.
30 million plus 1%?
Oh, whatever, 30 million plus, that's out of the 10% we said we're taking out of the. So that's my, I'm going to make a motion that we do that. We do what Dr. Serato's suggesting with those figures.
Item 1.9.7, Discussion and Take Possible Actions to Consider Whether Interest Earned Between May 2021 to August 31, 2023 Should Be Added to the Corpus or Made Available for Student Scholarships.
My motion is to give it to student scholarships.
Second.
You have any other discussion? Other question, Bill?
Mr. Uxser.
No.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahira.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Doc.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Good job. Thank you.
We're back under section 1.7. Item 1.7.2, Optional Presentations Will Be Made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good evening, Chair Haggerty, members of the Board, Presidents Serato, staff and guests. I'm Laura Gaither, President of the Classified Staff Association. As we begin the new fiscal year, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the officers of our Classified Staff Council. While some officers are unable to join us, others are, some are fulfilling their prior commitments. Each one deserves our appreciation for the work they do behind the scenes and on the front lines. Their contributions continue to make a meaningful impact across our district. Cynthia Arras, Vice President at Mission del Paso. Laura Estrada, which she is here, our Treasurer. Laura Gonzalez, our Rights and Responsibilities Officer at Valle Verde. Nancy Gutierrez, our Public Relations Officer. She's at Rio Grande, and she's our newest member. Kimberly McGroom, Rights and Responsibility, Rights and Responsibilities Officer at Trans Mountain. Cecilia Montoya, our Secretary at Valle Verde, and she's here as well. Letitia Montoya, Rights and Responsibilities Officer at Valle Verde. Evangelina Rangel, she's Vice President at Northwest. Norma Salas, Vice President at Valle Verde. Myself, Laura Gaither, as CSA President, and our Liaison, Fernando Mata. Each of these individuals bring unique strengths and a shared commitment to supporting our classified staff, whether through advocacy, outreach, or operational support. Their contributions are deeply valued. Our contributions this past fiscal year to our constituents and community are as follows. Throughout the year, our officers played a vital role at the craft fairs, offering guidance and support to our vendors throughout the events. Proceeds from these fairs directly benefit our constituents, providing essential assistance during times of need and reinforcement, reinforcing our commitment to them. Our officers offered compassionate guidance and support to individuals facing hardship due to eligible life events. Through our Emergency Relief Fund, we were able to assist one individual, providing not just financial aid, but a sense of stability and care during a difficult time. In November, with district-wide donations totaling $790.65, we donated 60 turkeys to three organizations serving families in need, helping ensure that more households could enjoy a warm, nourishing holiday meal. The three organizations were Winchester House Transitional Living Center, El Buen Pastor, and El Paso State Supported Living Center. In January, we contributed a clothing donation valued at $279.51 to the El Paso State Supporting Living Center. This donation helped provide essential items to individuals arriving in vulnerable circumstances, reinforcing our commitment to dignity, care, and community partnership. In February, we donated gift items in the amount of $202.06 to the Annual Staff Retreat. In July, we hosted a community event at Wen and Wild Water World, purchasing 100 tickets at $19.99 each, to ensure that everyone in the district could participate. Even though we sold out two weeks before the event, Wen and Wild graciously honored the discounted rate of $19.99 plus tax. the discounted rate of nineteen ninety-nine plus tax for any additional ticket sold beyond the initial a hundred, allowing even more families to join in the fun. As we begin a new fiscal year, we'd like to take a moment to remind our constituents of the Emergency Relief Fund available to support employees during times of urgent need. This fund is designed to assist in the event of a catastrophic natural disaster, emergency travel expenses for a critical ill employee or their immediate family, financial hardship resulting from a life-threatening medical emergency affecting the employee or their immediate family. We encourage anyone facing such circumstances to reach out to us and explore the support available. I, we're wishing everybody a successful, fulfilling, and resilient year ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Isaac Diaz Palma, and I currently serve as the EPCC Student Government Association President. I've been part of EPCC since twenty twenty-three, as an international student pursuing an degree in mechanical engineering, and I look forward to graduating by the end of this year and then transferring to UTEP. My journey with SGA began just over a year ago as Secretary. I later, later served as Vice President and now as President. Since my first year in SGA, we have worked together on many student-led initiatives, including bringing back the annual Fall Fest in Fall twenty twenty-four, the Period Basket Project, where we provide our students with period supplies in the restrooms at all campuses, hosting the twenty twenty-four TEC SGA Region One Conference at the Valle Verde Campus, where I was selected as a Student of the Year for Region One, representing EPCC during Community College Day at the State Capitol at the TEC SGA, and the TEC SGA State Convention, where we were awarded third place for our submission of scrapbook, which highlights the hard work of SGA and our student clubs, our SGA retreat for our newly inducted members, and mostly, most recently, installation of microwaves across all campuses. Of course, none of these would have been accomplished without the dedication and teamwork of my fellow SGA members. Our current SGA board read as follows. President Isaac Diaz, Vice President Luis Gonzalez, Parliamentarian Yanni Vázquez, Treasurer Victor Montes, Secretary Arleta Bullo, Historian Sofia Aguirre, Valle Verde Campus Representative Naomi Rodríguez, Rio Grande Campus Representative Cecilia García, Mission del Paso Campus Representative Brandon Rivera, Valle Verde Senator Andrea Domínguez, Valle Verde Senator Crystal Martínez, and Valle Verde Senator Keyla Robles. We are also fortunate to have the guidance and support of our advisors, our co-advisor Erika Costa Moreno, and our advisor Nadia Arribas. Additionally, I want to acknowledge the work of our student leadership team members, Viviana Sánchez and Mariana Olivas, and our entire campus life team. Without the contribution of each of these individuals, SGA would not be the same. As we begin a new academic year, our team has set clear goals to improve the student experience and strengthen our representation of the student body. These goals include expanding SGA representation to all campuses, prioritizing the student voice through regular service and feedback, increasing collaboration with EPCC administration by engaging with additional committees and departments, and to stay actively involved in college decisions by regularly attending Board of Trustees meetings. Also, I would like to highlight the positive impact of new initiatives from EPCC departments on our students by sharing some examples. The first is EPCC Cares, a mental health-focused initiative led by our counselors. Initiatives like these are essential as they provide students with resources that improve their overall college experience. I was among the first students enrolled in EPCC Cares when it launched, and I can confidently say that it was a game changer for me when I just used it to my college life. The second was an invitation from Dr. Ived Huerta, Director of Institutional Effectiveness, to join the upcoming Campus Improvement Meeting. This is a perfect example of valuing student perspectives in important discussions. This will be an excellent opportunity for collaboration and progress. Furthermore, over the past year, we've been collaborating with the Progress Pillar Team, where we reach out to students to gather their feedback on how EPCC can improve as an institution. One of outcomes of this effort was our participation in a student panel last week, where we advised instructors on how to enhance their communication with students. Finally, we're partnering with the New Student Orientation Department for tomorrow's Steel Batch, where we will be connecting with current and new students to build a sense of belonging. Now, I would like to take this moment to encourage all of EPCC departments to reach out to SGA for future partnerships. Together, we can ensure that the student voice is heard and that our initiatives have the greatest possible impact. Looking ahead, we're excited for a school year that will be both productive and enjoyable. We look forward to keep working to make EPCC the best place to start and to finish. Thank you so much for your, for welcoming us here, and go Tejanos. Thank you.
Trustees, Mr. President, Vice Presidents, Deans, all other guests. We are working diligently to try to implement the state-mandated SB thirty-seven. The Faculty Association Executive Committee met with President Serrata, VP Smith, earlier this month, and we believe we got most things worked out. There's still a couple of issues that are still outstanding. But on behalf of the faculty, I'd like to thank you all for passing the resolution reestablishing a Senate under the mandate. So thank you again, and we'll keep you updated on matters. Thanks. Bye.
Item one point seven point three, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will recognize individuals who have retired from El Paso Community College.
Chair Hagerty, members of the board, always a bittersweet moment when we say goodbye or we'll see you soon to individuals who have made an impact on the institution. I'm gonna begin today with Mr. Rudy Hernández, who's retiring after seventeen years of dedicated service to El Paso Community College. Mr. Hernández has made an impact as a full-time lecturer and tenured faculty member in psychology, teaching courses such as Psychology, Personality, Abnormal Psychology, Human Growth and Development, and Social Psychology. He has also contributed extensively to our Criminal Justice Program, teaching courses in criminal law, police practices, corrections, and court systems. In addition to his teaching, Mr. Hernández has shown leadership across various roles. He served as Campus Coordinator for the Northwest Campus in the areas of psychology, criminal justice, education, philosophy, and government. He also took on the role, role of District-Wide Coordinator for the Psychology Discipline, helping to shape the academic experience for countless students. Mr. Hernández's leadership extends beyond the classroom. He served as Vice President of the Faculty Association for both part-time and full-time faculty, and as President of the Faculty Senate Association. His committee work includes chairing the Faculty Professional Development Committee, the District-Wide Improvement Committee, and the Campus Improvement Committee. He also competed, contributed to EPCC's broader initiatives, such as the Teachership Academy Steering Committee, where he served as presenter, and the Campus Architectural Committee as part of our master plan. Outside of academics, Mr. Hernández has been an active volunteer, sharing his time as a karate instructor, this is new, I didn't realize that, for children through the Northwest Campus Summer Program, and supporting local public schools by judging speech contests. His commitment to service extends into the community. He currently serves as Vice Chair of the Immunized El Paso Board of Directors. His professional memberships include the American Psychological Association and the Society for Teaching of Psychology. Mr. Hernández, your years of service have made a difference at El Paso Community College. On behalf of the College District, we thank you for your dedication to our students, our faculty, and our community, and if you'll join me, please. We have one more retiree to recognize today, Ignacio Quintero Jr. After thirty-eight years of service, Professor Ignacio Quintero has decided to retire from EPCC. Before coming to EPCC, Mr. Quintero began his career with the United States Army and served two years in Vietnam before returning to El Paso. In nineteen seventy-two, he graduated from the Data Processing School in El Paso with a Computer Analyst degree. Nineteen seventy-four, he moved to California to pursue a more advanced degree in the computer field from the Electronic Computer Processing Institute. In nineteen eighty, Mr. Quintero returned to El Paso, where he completed his Master's Degree from the University of Phoenix while working as a Computer Analyst. After several years as a computer programmer, in nineteen eighty-seven, he was offered a part-time teaching job at EPCC. In nineteen eighty-nine, he was offered a full-time position under the Information Technology Systems Discipline and earned full professor rank in nineteen ninety-nine. Teaching has been by far the most rewarding career in his life. Mr. Quintero shares that sharing his knowledge with generations of students pushed, pushed the limits and set the bar higher than imagined. Students still remember him after many years and thank him for setting high goals for them, which inspired them to achieve more than they expected. Mr. Quintero has dedicated many years of service to the college as a faculty member who helped lay the groundwork for the robust ITS degrees that EPCC offers our student body. His peers, students, and colleagues thank him. On behalf of the institution, we wish Professor Quintero all the best in this new chapter of his life. Mr. Quintero, can you join me, please?
and Review Regarding Data Statistics Policies and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees. Item one point eight point one point one, Mr. Fernando Flores, Vice President of Finance and Administration, Chief Financial Officer, will provide a presentation on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Good afternoon, Chair Hagerty, Vice Chair Nahera, Secretary to the Board Graham, and members of the board, and Dr. Serrata. This afternoon, I will be preparing, presenting a short presentation on the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget, and it will be short compared to the others, I promise. I would like to start by saying that the presentation this evening is in direct support of item four point eight, which you will have later in your agendas, the approval of the operating budget. So budget workshops to the Board of Trustees have been presented on June the twenty-fifth and on August the sixth of this year, and during the budget workshops held on June the twenty-fifth and August the sixth, the Board of Trustees were provided with updates of the budget development process, the current year budget, and the state funding from the eighty-ninth legislature. State appropriations will be based on House Bill Eight funding model approved during the eighty-eighth legislature as a community college finance bill. In this legislature, performance measures and payment methods were refined. The preliminary fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget was also presented to include revenue projections, additional funding needs, and different funding strategies to fund the operating budget. So we will also cover the twenty-five, twenty-six revenue projections in the next few slides. Then we're gonna talk about the twenty-five, twenty-six baseline budget, which essentially is the expenditure side of the operating budget based upon executive-level submissions of budgets in the March twenty twenty-five timeframe. Then we will present the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget for your approval this evening. So this is a look at the revenue projections for twenty-five, twenty-six, and this amount at the very bottom of the middle column, one hundred and seventy-three million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, will be the amount presented for the operating budget, cause we cannot exceed revenue projections. So state appropriations came in on the revenue projections with a positive variance of five point six million dollars, or twelve point seven seven percent higher than the adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Tuition and fees are estimated at thirty-eight point nine million, a small decrease of two hundred and fourteen thousand. At the last presentation on August the sixth, I said that we would keep an eye on fall enrollment and adjust the figures if necessary. I would tell you that as of yesterday, our enrollment was two percent higher during the time of the August sixth presentation. We were down, I think, twenty-four students, we're up like four hundred and fifty-six, I think, yesterday. So it has slowly been trending in the right direction, and there is still late registration occurring this week. So property taxes now are estimated seventy-five point two million, and as the title on this slide says, based upon certified property valuations that we got from the CAD on July the twenty-fifth of this year, that is the projection for property tax revenue for next year. It has a positive variance of two point one million, around three percent higher than the adopted budget revenue for the prior year. So other income is estimated at six point two million. As a reminder, we budget interest income very conservatively, because it is not a good revenue source, because it is sometimes unpredictable based upon economic conditions and changes that occur quickly in the news and other places. So following next is the self-supporting revenues projected at three million dollars. The total for that column, as I said earlier, is one hundred and seventy-three million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, a positive variance of seven point four million over the prior year. of seven point four million over the prior year adopted budget. Overall, about a four point five percent increase. Next, we see these revenues, the same amount, hundred and seventy-three point nine million, represented as a percentage of the total revenues. And here, property tax revenue is still the highest at forty-three point two seven percent of the total revenues. State appropriations coming in second at twenty-eight point six two percent, followed by tuition and fees, twenty-two point three eight percent. Other income, three point six percent. Self-supporting and overhead recovery, smaller amounts making up the total revenue sources. Next, we have the baseline budgets, which determine the operating expenditure budget. Now, the baseline budget is based upon submissions by the various executive levels which occurred back in March of this year. And this is all the baseline budgets that were submitted without considering any extra requests or additional funding requests. So, when we look at the baseline budget, instruction is the highest at thirty-three point eleven percent, or fifty-four point seven million dollars, followed by institutional support, forty-nine million, forty-nine point seven million, or thirty percent of the baseline budget, followed by academic support, twenty point three million, or twelve point two eight percent of the budget. Interestingly, when you combine instruction and academic support, you get about forty-five percent of the budget in direct support of students. So, I would make that clarification for you. Operation and maintenance of physical plant, thirteen point two million dollars, or eight percent, followed by student services, which also goes to helping students. Twelve point seven million dollars, a seven point six eight percent. Transfers, seven point five million dollars, or four point six percent, followed by public service, three point eight million. Self-supporting programs are budgeted at three million, and research at two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, this is the baseline budget that is going to support the recommended operating budget, which you will see in the next few slides. This next slide combines both the baseline budget and then the additional funding needs. So, we just saw on the previous slide, the baseline budget of hundred and sixty-five point four million. Now, you see it again here on this slide and all the functional areas that comprise that amount. And then, followed by additional funding requests, we had critical needs that were presented to the board previously, one point seven million dollars. And then, an item to adjust our salary tables by six percent, the entry tables, the entry levels in the tables, valued at six hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then, the three percent salary increase that was approved at the August sixth board meeting, followed by additional requests from the executive levels of one point nine million dollars. And by N M Reserve, this will go to mitigate any revenue estimates that we may not have estimated properly. For example, if the state appropriation comes in lower than what we projected, this would be where we might balance that difference if it was lower. So, all told, this is the budget, proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We believe that all the revenue estimates are conservative and have considered certain risks that we are subject to, like state appropriations, having a biennium reserve. And we believe that this is a sustainable budget going forward. Are there any questions? It has been a long process, starting in February, so I'd like to thank the Budget Office led by Ms. Laura Tejes, Liliana Arrevalo, and Veronica Jimenez, also Associate Vice President Zuniga, which is in the audience. And also, in my office, in particular, my staff Juanita Martinez, Sylvia DeLucio, and Josette Shaughnessy. And in particular, Dr. Serata, who has been involved with the whole process, meeting, strategizing, and providing input, evaluating the additional requests. And my cabinet colleagues for bearing with all our questions as budget development progressed. And most of all, with the Board of Trustees for entertaining three budget presentations and listening to our requests. We are very appreciative of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Section one point nine, Board of Trustees Business. Items one point nine point one through one point nine point six and one point nine point ten will be discussed in executive session. Item one point nine point eight, Discussion and Action to Approve a Six Percent Salary Adjustment to the Salary Tables and Increase Pay to Ten Dollars for Employees Earning Less Than That Amount.
Move to approve.
Second.
I would only, I'd only let the board know that it is ten dollars per hour, just a clarification.
Any other discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item one point nine point nine, Discussion and Take Possible Action Regarding the Upcoming Board of Trustees Meeting Dates for September, October, and November twenty twenty-five.
Chair Hagerty and members of the board, the board and I will be traveling in October, and therefore, the meeting is scheduled during a time that there is a conflict, as well as, so I remind the board, our meeting for September is on the twenty-fourth of September, that stands. We are recommending to the board that the October meeting be held on Thursday, October thirtieth. We will be traveling, plus I have the Texas Association of Community Colleges, which is scheduled on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And then, in November, we have, based on the calendar, the board meeting would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We would like the board to enjoy Thanksgiving with your families, and so we are recommending Tuesday, December the second. We would not have a meeting in November, we would have the meeting in early December. Those are our recommendations to the board.
Anybody have a problem with those dates? Any motion?
Yes, you do.
Motion to approve the recommended dates.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section one point ten, Board Reports. Item one point ten point one, Treasurers Report. Item one point ten point one point one, July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five Financial Statements. No action is required. Item one point ten point two, Presidents Report. Item one point ten point two point one, Dr. William Serata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good evening, Chair Hagerty and members of the board. I'd like to begin my report by thanking the EPCC Cosmetology and Nail Tech students who participated in the annual Power of Pink event, offering complimentary beauty services to local cancer survivors. Students provided hairstyling, makeup, and manicures, followed by a professional photo shoot and gift giveaways. This meaningful event highlights the students' talent and community spirit. To highlight the first week of classes, EPCC Marketing partnered with KVIA Channel Seven, which featured the Rio Grande Campus as part of its morning show. During a live broadcast, Tejano Jack and Cheer showed their support, their EPCC spirit and excitement for the start of a new semester. College was able to share information on ongoing registration, mini-masters, and our many health occupations and other programs. Many thanks to Dr. Amaya, Dr. Hajar, Mr. Ayub, Dr. Thomas Sotomayor, Bo Bagley, as well as Dr. Carey Mo. They were on the Rio Grande Campus at four forty-five AM. So, many thanks for them, for all the work on that effort. Appreciate all the good work. On July twenty-fifth, EPCC's NASA Globe Partner Program teamed up with La Nube, STEAM Discover Center, and EPCC's Physics for the Lego Summer Camp. Students explored satellite data with Legos, learned buoyancy and flotation through a build-a-b boat race, and engaged in interactive physics demonstrations. The Globe Office at the Trans Mountain Campus will continue STEM outreach throughout the year. This fall, the Mission del Paso campus will launch its third academic year of the eight-week hybrid project, an initiative to support student success and flexible learning. The program has played a key role in sustaining the campus's upward enrollment trend while maintaining a strong average pass rate of eighty-four percent among participants. Thank you to our Mission del Paso deans and the faculty and staff behind this great initiative supporting student success. Earlier this month, Big Brothers Big Sisters hosted a celebration for eight participants who completed a hundred and fifty-four hours of training in a pilot multifamily building maintenance technician program. Workforce Solutions Borderplex provided funding, and the program's creation represented a collaboration among EPCC Center for Corporate and Workforce Training and Advanced Technology Center, Workforce Solutions Borderplex, and the Housing Authority of El Paso, which initially requested the program. Students completing the program earned an OSHA-10 certification and engaged in coursework covering electrical troubleshooting, HVAC, small appliance repair, plumbing, and interior wall finishing. Special thanks to Dr. Olga Valerio, Dean of Industry Partnerships and Workforce Training, and Jose Caso Lopez, Director of the Center for Corporate and Workforce Training, who led the collaboration and are currently submitting the program as a new Occupational Skills Award for the college. Well done. Earlier this summer, a team from EPCC participated in a convening and workshop in Austin sponsored by the Greater Texas Foundation, marking the successful completion of the first year of the Texas Emergency Aid Roadmap Program. This is a three-year grant program to help EPCC and a cohort of nine other community colleges develop efficient, sustainable emergency assistance programs to ensure students receive the support they need to stay in school and graduate. As a result of this work, EPCC has streamlined its criteria and processes for distributing emergency aid. Thank you to the EPCC Greater Texas Foundation core team members representing divisions college-wide, including Enrique Costa Moreno, Carmen Gomez, Dr. Dolores Grass, Inés Lopez, Nadia Rivas, Perla Renteria, Teresa Reina Fernandez, Shannon Vias, Lillian Wu, and Ana Zuniga, with team lead Dr. Carey Mo. Since two thousand and three, the Northwest Campus Jenna Welsh and Laura Bush Community Library has been participating in a statewide initiative to promote literacy, gathering on average every year between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty children at the library to participate in over thirty-five different classes. The classes include watercolor, crochet, coding, and storytime, among others. For twenty twenty-five, two hundred and eighty children registered for the program and participated in the citywide reading program through the El Paso Public Library. Moreover, EPCC student parents received a scholarship for their children through participation as part of the EPCC Family Friendly Campus Initiative. The Veterans Resource Center is pleased to announce that the Texas Veteran Commission takes great pleasure in awarding the college with the Gold Veterans Education Excellence Recognition Award, or Vera. The Veteran Education Excellence Recognition Award is presented at gold, silver, and bronze levels to highlight the depth and breadth of services provided to veteran students and their families. The Texas State Legislature established the Vera program to recognize public colleges and universities for their excellence in providing education and related services to veterans and the military-connected community. El Paso Community College applied for recognition and showcased its commitment to ensuring the academic success of these individuals. Congratulations on this gold award recognition to Dr. Paula Mitchell, our AVP of Instruction and Student Success, and to Mr. Carl Dwyer, our Director of EPCC's Veterans Resource Center. Proud to share that Lieutenant, that Lieutenant Erickto Franco, who serves our Trans Mountain and Northwest campuses, has become the first officer in El Paso County to earn the Law Enforcement Command Officer Certification from the Texas Police Chiefs Association. This is a highly respected credential held by only a select group of leaders across Texas. Over eighteen months, Lieutenant Franco completed two hundred and fifty hours of advanced leadership training in ten cities, and he now brings that expertise back to EPCC. His accomplishment reflects his commitment to lifelong learning and leadership, and it strengthens the professionalism of our entire college police department. Congratulations, Lieutenant Franco, on this outstanding achievement. Music Professor Yasmin Flores secured twenty-five thousand dollars and donated school supplies from the El Paso Community Foundation. This ten-year collaboration allows area elementary and middle schools to visit EPCC's Via Verde Campus and be equipped with the necessary backpack, pens, and general school supplies they need to start the upcoming school year successfully. The School Store occurred on Saturday, July twenty-six, and ISD students and their families attended. Nearly thirty-five EPCC programs, disciplines, and clubs were represented at the School Store event. Families and prospective students stopped by each table to pick up some EPCC merchandise and learn about various opportunities available at the college. Professor Flores expresses her gratitude to the countless volunteers around the EPCC district. Special thanks to the Via Verde Campus for making the Tenth Annual School Store a resounding success. Special thanks to Professor Flores for the great work serving as the School Store Coordinator for the last two years. Congratulations to Dr. Christian Servin, Professor of Computer Science, for receiving two prestigious awards. In July, he was named High Tech, H-I-T-E-C, Educator of the Year at the National High Tech Conference in Minneapolis. Just weeks later, he received the King Sun Fu Award from the North American Fuzzy Information Processing Society at their international conference in Canada. These awards recognize his leadership in technology, education, artificial intelligence, and computing. Dr. Servin's work reflects EPCC's commitment to innovation and preparing students for success in high-tech careers. Congratulations to Dr. Servin. EPCC proudly celebrated its students at the Urban Partnership Synergy Symposium El Paso, highlighting the USDA and Texas A&amp;M Conservation Careers Internship Program. Funded by the USDA and NRCS, the program engages underrepresented students, particularly in the Mission Valley, in agriculture, natural resources, and human sciences. Since January twenty twenty-five, EPCC, UTEP, and NMSU students have gained hands-on research and fieldwork experience through paid internships culminating in project showcases at the symposium. The event also featured EPCC Dean Daniel Guerra as a panelist on community partnerships, reflecting the college's commitment to mentorship, training, and building a diverse workforce prepared to address future environmental and agricultural challenges. Chair Hagerty, that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to the board with any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Serata? Thanks, Doctor.
Item one point eleven, Consent Docket, there is none. Section two, Administration. Item two point one, CFCM Tasby Local Policies for Revision, Adoption, and Approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item two point two, CAM Tasby Local Policy for First Reading Review and Comment Only, no action is required. Section three, Personnel. Item three point one, institutionally externally funded full-time staff appointments, extensions, resignations, and retirements, no action is required. Item three point two, Tenured Track Faculty Appointments, New Tenured Faculty and Faculty Extensions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item three point three, Discussion and Action on the Reappointment of Continuing Probationary Faculty and Authorization for the President to Enter into Written Employment Contracts and Contract Addenda for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic year with tenured and probationary faculty members.
Move to approve. Three point three and three point four.
Second.
Item three point four, Discussion and Action on the Reappointment of Continuing Regular Administrative Classified Professional Staff and Requesting Authorization for the President to Enter into Written Employment Contracts effective September one, twenty twenty-five with the listed employees.
Any discussion on three point three? Any on three point? Any on three point four? Call the question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section four, Financial Services. Item four point one, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Contract Award to USI Southwest Inc. for Commercial Property, Automobile, General, Law Enforcement, Educators, Legal, and Umbrella Liability, Excess Crime, Cyber Risk, Vocational Student Accident, and Crisis Management Insurance in an Amount Not to Exceed One Million Three Hundred and Seventy-Six Thousand One Hundred and Ninety-Five Dollars.
Move to approve four point one and four point two.
Second.
Item four point two, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising Services from Various Radio Stations for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six in an Amount Not to Exceed Three Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars Annual Aggregate.
Have any questions on four point one?
Yep. Chair, as long as we include four point two, my intention was to ask for four point three, four point four, and four point five. Can these now be included into this?
No, because this is already a motion made.
We already have a first and a second. We can discuss them as we go along. Do you have any questions on those two, doctors?
Um, no, I will include as a general part of the next deal.
Okay, call the questions.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point three, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising Services from Various Television Stations for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six in an Amount Not to Exceed Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars Annual Aggregate.
Move to approve four point three, four point four, and four point five.
Second.
Item four point four, Discussion and Action on the Procurement of District-Wide Advertising Services with Several Publication Vendors for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six in an Amount Not to Exceed Two Hundred Thousand, Two Hundred Thousand Dollars Annual Aggregate. Item four point five, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award a Contract to Clear Channel Outdoor for Outdoor Advertising for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six in an Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars Annual Aggregate.
Any questions on four point three?
I have a question on four point three.
Go ahead.
Actually, in the whole thing, if you look at four point two, three, four, and five, all fall under the larger category of media. If you total them, they come to just a tad short of one million dollars. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First of all, these are broken up by topics, and I think if I remember correctly, these requested amounts are similar or comparable to a request at this time last year about this amount. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, if we had a million dollars, how much of that did we spend last year? Did we spend that, all of that money last year?
We spent less than five hundred thousand dollars on advertising, but this gives us the flexibility based on research to adjust where we're spending the money.
Okay, so you're asking for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars on aggregate in all four. Would you anticipate that you would need all nine hundred and fifty? Or if not, why?
No, last year, we only spent four hundred and sixty thousand.
And this year?
The same amount is in the budget.
And so, and the reason for that is?
So this way, we have flexibility when we're looking at our return on investment, and we see the data on how the advertising is producing. We can adjust. For example, if we see we need to spend a little bit more in television, or we need to spend a little bit more in radio to reach a particular demographic, it gives us the flexibility to make those adjustments.
Okay, and last question. In looking at that, how do we determine? Do you have a survey, or is it general questions, or it's observation? What leads you to make, you know, like, a real-time decision over the year as to where to emphasize your median?
That's a great question. We're always monitoring whether it's anecdotal or whether through measurement, for example, on our digital advertising, we're able to measure click-through rates. That would be one example. Other times, we look at enrollment and determine where the dollars are making an impact and adjust accordingly.
And Dr. Serada.
Yes, sir.
Of all this, if I'm not mistaken, I think this is one of the few times that we actually have one person really is sort of working with a budget of a million dollars. And I think, I think she's done, that area has done an exceptional job, exceptional job, in being able to identify, segregate, qualify, and follow up and respond in real time as to what needs to be done. And appears to be, don't go to your head, but appears to be a good steward of the money.
Mr. Exer, I certainly appreciate that, and I certainly concur that Dr. Mo and her team have done a tremendous job. We saw spring enrollment up approximately five percent. Summer enrollment was up eleven percent. We were, we are currently surprised that fall enrollment is relatively flat. We're up a couple percent today, and we have, we're continuing the enrollment process, and we'll continue it through minimesters. But I agree, Dr. Mo and her team have done a great job of disaggregating the data and utilizing the different modes of communication with students. They have shifted over time. We used to do a lot more television, and they have shifted over time to do a lot more social media. And I agree and concur with your congratulatory statements towards you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Four point four or four point five?
Great job, Dr. Mo.
All right, call the question.
Mr. Uxser.
Boy, it'd look sad if I said no, wouldn't it?
It'd be confusing in a minute. Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point six, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Contracts with Purchasing Cooperative Awarded Vendors to Provide Copy Paper for the Instructional Service Centers and Open Computer Labs for the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six in an Amount Not to Exceed Ninety-five Thousand Dollars Estimated Annual Aggregate Amount.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item four point seven, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of the Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Certified Appraisal Role with a Net Taxable Value of Property within the El Paso County Community College District of Seventy-three Billion Four Hundred and Sixty-three Million Three Hundred and Five Thousand Seven Hundred and Twenty-four Dollars as established by the Central Appraisal District.
Move to approve four point seven, four point eight, four point nine, and four point ten.
Second.
Item four point eight, Discussion and Action on the Adoption of the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Operating Budget of One Hundred and Seventy-three Million Nine Hundred and Thirty-one Thousand Six Hundred and Thirty-two Dollars. Item four point nine, Discussion and Action on the Adoption of the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Auxiliary Fund Budget. Item four point ten, Discussion and Action on the Adoption of the Order and the Certificate of Order Setting Tax Rate of Zero Point One Zero Three Five Six Three per One Hundred Dollars Valuation of Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six.
Any questions on four point seven? Four point eight? Four point nine?
Yes. When we look at four point nine with the budget, and so I referred back to page one-one-three, which talks about that. And then, actually, what happened is that it refers into a table on four point four, and we have the auxiliary budget for fiscal year. And if I look at that, there's two columns. It says Budget Eight Thirty-One Twenty-Five, and it has Ending Fund Balance of Five Point Five Three Eight Two Three Four. And then it says Budget Beginning the Next Year at Five Point Eight Two Four. So there's a delta of almost three hundred thousand dollars gain. Do we not have, if we say end-of-year budget and a start-of-year budget, those, is, does there something occur in between there that you're not tracking? How come that we have three hundred thousand dollars difference?
That's a very good observation, Mr. Uxser. That is a budgeted projection for ending fund balance and not the one based upon actual numbers. So it is a budgeted, the budget is a projection. So this is what we budgeted for the end of this year as the fund balance. But in reality, it's going to come in higher because revenues came in higher to the auxiliary fund. Therefore, we start with what we believe is going to be the beginning balance, which is higher because we had higher revenues than expected.
Okay, so we think, we think the bottom line is one thing, but then if we sit back and think about it, the bottom line of another is the same thing, is different. And so we don't want to account and say, hey, I have a guess of three hundred thousand I'm going to include here. Is that right? I mean, I don't, I'm just, it's still not clear. I mean, if it's sort of an estimate, how come you don't have a consistent estimate between years? I understand, that's fine, it's good. It just seems, seems to me that if you have end-of-year and starting-of-year, it ought to be the same number, or you ought to qualify your assumptions.
That's a good observation. Thank you.
Any other questions on four point ten? Call the question.
I, okay. Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
I need to read an order accepting the appraisal role. Order accepting certified appraisal role, whereas the Board of Trustees of said district desire that the appraisal role for the district for the two thousand and twenty-five tax year be accepted and approved. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees, by the Board of Trustees of the El Paso County Community College District, one, that the appraisal role for the district for the two thousand and twenty-five tax year be accepted as approved by the two thousand and twenty-five Appraisal Review Board and certified by the Chief Appraisal as follows. Net taxable value, seventy-three Billion Four Hundred and Sixty-three Million Three Hundred and Five Thousand Seven Hundred and Twenty-four Dollars. Order setting tax rate, whereas the Board of Trustees of said district has received, accepted, and approved the certified appraisal roles for the two thousand and twenty-five tax year. And whereas the district has calculated those tax rates and made such other calculations as required by law, and whereas the Board of Trustees of said district wishes to adopt a tax rate. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of the El Paso County Community College District, one, that the Maintenance and Operation Tax Rate for the district for the two thousand and twenty-five tax year be set and adopted in accordance with Chapter Twenty-Six of the Texas Tax Code entitled The Property Tax Code as follows. Operations Tax Rate, zero point one zero three five six three dollars per one hundred dollars valuation. Total, zero point one zero three five six three dollars per one hundred dollars valuation.
Any other questions on that?
No.
You read it. We already get it, right?
Yes. Section five, Physical Facilities. Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award a Contract to Archie Pelley and Steve E. Franco LLC to Provide Architectural Services Related to the Law Enforcement Training Academy Building at Mission del Paso Campus in an Amount Not to Exceed Ninety-six Thousand Two Hundred and Twenty-four Dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. Is this for the wall in the back to keep the bullets removed of the building?
It is partly for that, and it's a renovation of the building, Chair Hagerty. So we've operated in this building for quite some time, and it was due for renovations. And so we're going to take care of that in addition to renovating.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, if we have a law enforcement training academy and we're providing that, do we have the opportunity to ask other law enforcement agencies around here to chip in? Because if they benefit from this, I mean, it seems like we ought to get the police department or the county sheriff, or maybe the constables, or somebody to chip in a couple of bucks to pay for their bullets going downrange.
Do you want to take that, Dr. Smith?
Mr. Exer, they do pay for their own ammunition, and we do have agreements with them for the use of the facilities.
Agreements, but, but we're going to spend money for that structure to stop those bullets, you know? They ought to, I mean, they don't get to fire them and then go away. They ought to sit there and pay for them being stopped, or...
We'll take that under consideration.
Okay. They might want to help out.
Any other questions? All the questions, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section six, Curriculum and Instruction. Item six point one, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Contract with Gobi Library Solutions from EBSCO to Purchase Library Materials for the EPCC Libraries in an Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred and Sixty-five Thousand Nine Hundred and Sixty Dollars.
Move to approve six point two, six point three, and six point four.
Second.
Second.
Is it four?
Six one?
Six one, put it?
Yes.
Let's check.
Item six point two, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Contract with Online Database and Discovery Service Provider EBSCO for the EPCC Libraries in an Amount of Ninety Thousand Sixty Dollars. Item six point three, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Grant Award from the U.S. Department of Education Trio Student Support Services, SSSP, in an amount of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Item six point four, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Grant Award from the Department of Defense in an Amount of Three Hundred and Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-eight Dollars.
Chair Hagerty, I'd just like to allow Dr. Smith to recognize individuals who worked on these. They're in total just over, just short of a million and a half dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Serada. So the first two items are actually expenditure items to help our library database, fund our library databases for our students. Those are things we bring annually to the institution. So very important that we get those items approved for our students today. The second two are obviously part of a cornucopia of grants that are on this particular board agenda. I get paid extra to use that word today. Yeah, very excited. So the SSSP grant is something that we've had for over thirty years now, targeting first-generation students, low-income students, disabled students, giving them every opportunity and support for success at the institution. On all of these, I'd first like to thank the Grants Department. They're our valued partners. They're instrumental in everything we do there. So Bob Elliott and his team here in the audience today for the SSSP, we've got Lucia Rodriguez, Director of the Program, as well as Mirella Pasiya. She's the manager of SSSP. So if they want to maybe wave and stand up and be recognized, thank you for the work. And they are both under Dr. Mitchell's purview. So Dr. Mitchell is also instrumental in all of this. And then the Contract Opportunity Center, also longstanding resource here at the college. We help local people, businesses, and other entities get into the government contracting business, both local contracting and federal contracting business. Huge impact on the community. So Mr. Pablo Armand Doris and Blaine Primazic are in the audience today. So thank them for the ongoing work that they do.
Any other questions? All the question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item six point five, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education True Grant in the Amount of Two Hundred Thousand Dollars.
Move to approve six point five, six point six, and six point seven.
Second.
Item six point six, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, in the Amount of One Hundred and Forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Item six point seven, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of a Grant from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, The Data to Action for Parenting Students at Texas Colleges and Universities, D2ATX Grant Program in the Amount of One Hundred and Eighteen Four Hundred and Fifty Dollars. One Hundred and Eighteen Thousand Dollars.
Again, Dr. Smith, I want to give you an opportunity to recognize the individuals who've worked on these. These, plus the other two, are well over one point five million.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Serada. So just a little context, the TRU Grant, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education. This is our fourth TRU Grant. Amazing, ever since the TRU Grant was established, we've gotten that grant every year. We're now over one point five million dollars. And the driving force behind the various incarnation of our TRU Grants is Dr. Saraya Hajar, who is...
Item 6.5, discussion and action on the acceptance of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THCB, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education, TRU, grant in the amount of $200,000.
Move to approve 6.5, 6.6, and 6.7.
Second.
Item 6.6, discussion and action on the acceptance of a grant from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THCB, in the amount of $149,976. Item 6.7, discussion and action on the acceptance of a grant from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THCB, The Data to Action for Parenting Students at Texas Colleges and Universities, D2ATX Grant Program, in the amount of $118,450. $118,000, sorry.
Again, Dr. Smith, I want to give you an opportunity to recognize the individuals who've worked on these. These, plus the other two, are well over $1.5 million.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Serrata. So just a little context, the TRU grant, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education, this is our fourth TRU grant. Amazing, ever since the TRU grant was established, we've gotten that grant every year. We're now over $1.5 million in the driving force behind the various incarnation of our TRU grants, is Dr. Soraya Hajar, who is also in the audience, one of our deans at our real grand campus. Thank you. Her and her team do a fabulous job. This one is focused on pharmacy tech and increasing opportunities for students in pharmacy tech. Very much needed, high-demand occupation in our region is nursing, and so Dr. Jaffe Guerrero, our Dean of Nursing over there, received the nursing grant to increase the opportunities and capacity for our LVN students, our one-year nursing students, to transition into our RN program, our two-year nursing program. Prior to kind of establishing some changes in that program, students had to re-rank into the nursing program. This now gives them an opportunity and resources to allow them to move directly into the two-year program. We will have more nurses in the region because of his work. Thank you, Dr. Guerrero. And then finally, another shout-out to Director Lucia Rodriguez and Dr. Mitchell. The D2A Texas Grant will help our parenting students and give them resources and assistance. This is part of our family-friendly presence. We now have family-friendly centers at every one of our campuses, and this is going in support of those, so thank you, Lieutenant, Director Lucia Rodriguez.
Chair, I have a question. Dr. Smith, just, just how I understand correctly, I mean, do I recall correctly that our regular full nursing RN programs and LVN programs are fully subscribed, that is, that the attendant, we're at max load for each one of those classes?
That is correct, Mr. Serrata.
And is there, is there a waiting list?
There is currently. I will tell you that Dean Guerrero is establishing a night LVN program to increase capacity.
Okay.
And so we are working on ways to make more seats available in those programs.
Okay. Wouldn't one of the things that, having a nighttime program, still one of the bottlenecks, if you will, is having the trained faculty? I mean, you can ask extra time, but you only have, we're sort of maxed out on faculty hours, is that, you know?
Yeah, there's a couple of limiting factors to growing the program. Resources, obviously, rooms and labs at the college. We've done great work in advancing opportunities there. Qualified faculty is a hurdle, and available clinical sites are also kind of a hurdle.
Okay, I just want to point out, would you go ahead and tell us what your, the, the general pass rate has been for those programs over the last five years?
Yeah, so...
Or, sort of?
Yeah, generally, the pass rate for accreditation purposes hovers around 90%. That's the, the bar. We've exceeded that in the last number of years. So we hover, depending on the program, between 92 and 95%.
Without being specific, you know, if I'm not correct, that exceeds the pass rate and the qualification rate of any other nursing program by any other institution here in town. Is that be correct?
I'm going to qualify that. We are absolutely one of the highest pass rate entities in the region.
So, Dr. Serrata, you need to give them a pat on the back besides your, yeah.
And Dr. Guerrero does a great job.
And so now, let's, let's start to vote, since we have an extra million for, okay? Let's see if we can't devote that to stealing some of the instructors from some of the other programs, and getting our program, I mean, you know, and we're doing better than they are, is one of the best. Why don't we just provide them the opportunity to participate with the community college at one less, at one of those other institutions that, you know, is striving to catch up with us?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 7, Student Services. Item 7.1, discussion and action on the approval of lease contracts with the Phoenix of El Paso for rental of apartments for the intercollegiate athletics department in an, in an amount not to exceed $116,875.
Move to approve. Second.
FYI, if we use that figure over the last past 25 years, if we would have built these apartments back then, we would, I think we have spent $2.9 million on rent.
But we weren't on the board back then when you started that.
Just FYI. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 7.2, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education CE tuition rates for new courses.
Motion?
Move to approve 7.2, 7.3.
Second.
Item 7.3, discussion and action on the approval of continuing education CE tuition rates for revised courses.
Any discussion? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 8, Community Services, there is none? Would the board like to resist into executive session?
Yes, please.
Item 1.3, Executive and Closed Session. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda, if the subject matters permitted, for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item 1.3.1, discussion with legal counsel regarding a lawsuit styled Catalina Valtierra Piñón versus El Paso County Community College District, Cause Number 2024 DCV 2798, in the 168 Judicial District Court of El Paso County, Texas.
No action. No action. 1.9.2.
Discussion and take possible action regarding a lawsuit styled Catalina Valtierra Piñón versus El Paso County Community College District, Cause Number 2024 DCV 2798, in the 168 Judicial Court, District Court of El Paso County, Texas.
No action. No action. 1.9.2.
Discussion and take possible action regarding proposed contract non-renewal of an employee in the Division of Instruction and Workforce Education.
No action.
No action, okay. 1.9.3.
Discussion and take possible action regarding proposed contract non-renewal of an employee in the Division of Instruction and Workforce Education.
I move to approve the recommendation of the non-renewal contract of Sylvia Gonzalez effective August 31, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 1.9.4, discussion and take possible action regarding proposed contract non-renewal of an employee in the Division of Instruction and Workforce Education.
I move to approve the recommendation of the non-renewal contract of Dr. Horacio Gonzalez effective August 31, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 1.9.5, discussion and take possible action regarding Texas Senate Bill 2237, 89th Legislative Regular Session, 2025.
No action. 1.9.6, we've already discussed it, no? No, we didn't, that was Mr. Smith's. Read 1.9.6.
Yes, sir. Discussion and take possible action regarding Texas Senate Bill 2615, 89th Legislative Regular Session, 2025.